I'm Terrell Arline. I'm with the Law Office of Theuriac in Spain from Tallahassee and we are assisting with this matter today.
Can I get you to speak into the microphone?
Trying to. Is it on?
Check one, two. It's not on.
Not on yet. Hold on.
Not on yet. Check, check, check. Check one, two.
There they go.
There we go.
Good morning. I'm Terrell Arline. I'm with the Law Office of Theuriac in Spain from Tallahassee and we're here to assist staff present this item today. Previously witnesses have been sworn. The first witness will be Mike Fegan, who is the planner on this matter. Mike, state your name, please.
Mike Fegan, planner with Community Development.
And were you the primary planner on the Hidden Lakes project?
Yes, I was.
And did you prepare a staff report outlining your analysis and recommendations and positions on deviations?
Yes, I did.
And has a copy of that staff report been provided to the zoning board and to the applicant and to the clerk?
Yes, it has.
And in that staff report, did you conclude that the application for the Hidden Lakes project as modified by the conditions and with your recommendations on the deviations, that it meets the requirements of the Conference Plan and Land Development Code?
I do. Yes, correct.
And the detail of that is in the staff report, but I just wanted to make sure that the staff report was in and that that point was addressed. And you have a PowerPoint presentation that breaks out the staff report and deviations.
I do.
Okay, can we present that now?
Sure.
Any questions? Just gonna have you for this.
Again, Mike Fegan for the record, Community Development. I'm gonna go ahead and submit one more copy of the staff report and backup documentation for the record. I also have here a list of responses that were provided as part of the 375-foot public notification requirement that we have. Now, keep in mind, I'm doing this based on the desires of Spanish Wells early on in this process to present these. This was back when the request was for something a little bit different, but nevertheless, I told them when we got to the hearing I would go ahead and submit a copy for the record. Before I go forward with the report, I want to just do a little quick show and tell based on some feedback that was provided to staff at the last meeting with regards to access to the staff report, table of contents, things like that. The staff report is available on the city's website. I have it pulled up right here. It has been available for as long as I can remember, but let's just go ahead and just go over really quick. The Government tab, you can go to City Documents from there, and the Agenda and Packet will always be under the tab labeled Agenda and Packages. And they tend to go in descending order. So we have right here zoning board Agenda and Packet. You can click on it, and you should be able to pull up exactly what's in front of you, all 200 and some odd pages of it. And you can, the beautiful thing about this is your ability to zoom in, make it a bit more clear when needed. The other change that went along with this, which was at the request of Chairman Kurlander, was to include a table of contents, which we have done on Page Three, that outlines the report in detail. The numbering system that we use is found at the bottom center of every page. So that's just a couple of things I wanted to go ahead and share with you. Also throughout the report online, you will see various code sections, and you'll see it in front of you as well. Various code sections that are underlined. Let me just get to one. And when you click on these, it's supposed to be a hyperlink that actually takes you to that section of the code or a copy of that plan. So just wanted to go ahead and share that with you. I'll move on to the presentation now. I'm not going to rehash much of what the applicant had discussed for the purposes of time. The applicant did a good job of explaining their position and the position that staff is largely taking on this item. Really quick though, I do want to recognize the staff members that did assist me in the review and analysis of this particular report. Their names listed there. Some of them you've already heard from today. They're all here today, available for questions if you have any in those specific areas. So the request as it stands right now in the application is to rezone 27.4 acres plus or minus to a residential plan development to permit a maximum of 241 multiple-family units. That is a little bit of a distinction. On the master concept plan, they're showing 240. The request in the application was for 241. That's what staff was looking at, was for 241. And staff is recommending approval of this request. Part of the process and procedures which the applicant had gone over actually previously, we already went over the hyperlinks to the LDC. I have those embedded and studies embedded throughout the document, including copies of previous development order approvals. One of the things that we touched on in a previous hearing that we also looked at with this application was sufficiency comments versus substantive comments and the differences between the two. We have a process that allows for both to be reviewed, examined, and submitted back to the applicant for their consideration. And also coordination with outside counsel on this review to make sure that staff was following the code during the review process. So again, where this location is, we're talking at the southern boundary of the city, right along the Lee Collier Line there. I have it starred out for you. And to sort of zoom in a little bit more, you have Spanish Wells to the east, you have Springs Plaza to the north, Sterling Oaks is to the south, and the Woods Edge DRI, I believe it's called, the Diamond Ridge DRI now, is to the west.
And that's been substantially built out?
Yes, correct. That has been substantially built out. Future land use, as was already testified, is general commercial. The general commercial future land use category, while it provides allowances for mainly commercial uses, it does have an allowance for multifamily residential specifically, up to 10 units per acre. The zoning, the project as it currently stands spans a couple of different zoning districts, both residential and commercial in nature. The southern portion, which is the portion where the lake is, currently has a residential zoning designation of RM2, which is a multifamily designation that would allow for multifamily to go there by right. And the northern portion is zoned commercial plan development, and it's also partially zoned CS1, which is a special commercial district. Surrounding property, to the immediate north of the project, you have a commercial business, the American Heart Association. To the south is the Collier Line. On the other side of that, you have Sterling Oaks, and it has a residential multifamily component that abuts this property along with the southern portion of Spanish Wells. To the east, you have Spanish Wells, which the portion that directly abuts this project is the single-family component, although as the applicant mentioned and as staff showed in the staff report as well, there are various small multifamily portions involved within Spanish Wells as well. And to the immediate west of this project, you have various retail and commercial, Whiting First, the Steinway Piano Gallery, Pincher's Crab Shack, West Marine, so on and so forth, just to give you familiarity for what's around the area there. One more map to kind of demonstrate where we are. The project we're talking about would be here. Commercial, Spanish Wells, American Heart, Sterling Oaks, on your four sides there. Going over some of the history, the northern portion, which had a previous zoning designation of commercial plan development, it was rezoned commercial plan development back in 1998. The zoning ordinance was Z98077. It is linked in the staff report. And it provided an allowance for 108,000 square feet of commercial. There was no multifamily on the schedule at the time. It did set some maximum height limits similar to what staff ended up recommending. The development order was approved in 1999, but that portion of the project was never constructed. And both the development order and the master concept plan have since expired. So in order for anything to be built there, the applicant would have had to go through the public hearing process, and that's why we're here today. On the south side, there was an existing multifamily development order that was approved originally through Lee County and then through the city of Benita Springs. I believe the original name of the project was called the Abaco Club. And the original approval was for 120 units with Lee County. That was changed in 2008 with Benita to 105 units. The DO expired in 2014, and as the applicant had already testified, the site was filled but never fully constructed. And so the development order has expired on that particular portion. It's important to note that the master concept plan that you have in front of you went through several iterations. There was a lot of analysis done on the staff side and the applicant's side as well with this master concept plan. With the initial concept plan, we did find the application to be insufficient, meaning that there were items missing based on the LDC that should have been provided or identified on the master concept plan that weren't initially. An example of some of those items would have been to demonstrate sidewalk connections, adding the actual development regulations to the concept plan, so they appear right there, showing where the deviations are going to be located on the plan, and also providing locations of the signage. Some of the substantive comments that we provided, and substantive meaning, we're not talking code, we're talking about, now let's talk about creating a better project. Some of the substantive comments that were given was to move the compactor away from Spanish Wells. In this initial iteration, the compactor was located closer to the east boundary, and obviously staff felt it appropriate to provide some incentive to go ahead and move that. We also requested a line of site exhibit showing what the views would be like going into Spanish Wells, and also putting them on notice that the multifamily construction that would be presented would need to meet the architectural standards of LDC Chapter So that led to a resubmital, number two. They did provide the sidewalk connectivity that we asked for. They identified the signs. They moved the compactor away from Spanish Wells. We still needed them to go ahead and label the landscape buffers that were going to be around the project. And we still had some substantive comments for them, such as the line of site exhibit, providing a cross-section for the lake. Staff wanted to take a look at that with regards to when the deviations requested for setback. Transposing the direction of the compactor, which there is a later condition that addresses that as well. We didn't think it was appropriate to have the compactor visible from your main entrance, so we asked that it be transposed and face the opposite way. So the location was okay, but we didn't want the entrance of the compactor to be right there at your main gate. And then also at this time, we had put the applicant on notice of, at what was at the time, the pending quadrant plan documentation and studies that were taking place in front of city council with regards to better interconnectivity as opposed to using the main Tamiami Trail and Benita Beach Road thoroughfares. So after the initial sufficiency comments or the insufficiency comments in round two, they submitted a third plan, and this third plan was considered sufficient. And it is important to note that when we say sufficient, it means that they provided us what we needed in order for staff to continue on with the analysis based on the code. When we sent out a sufficiency letter, that did not mean that we were approving the project. It meant we were approving the documentation they gave us to review the project. I want to make sure that was clear. As we started going through the analysis in the coming months, we found additional sort of issues and concerns that we were having with this project that we were raising to the applicant. And it led to another submittal. In this case, it changed eight out of the 10 buildings to two stories in height. We had an understanding based on feedback from Spanish Wells and also based on meetings that the applicant was having with Spanish Wells, that having a three-story product that close to the Spanish Wells property line was becoming less and less desirable. And staff, in an effort to look at compatibility, which is a code requirement, felt that this was a needed change. And it led to a resubmittal of the concept plan again. Again, eight out of the 10 buildings going down to two stories in height, and the two buildings closest to Benita Crossings Boulevard going to four stories in height. The original indication of this was to show the height going to the midpoint, which is the way it is measured in the Land Development Code. Staff was having, not concerns because it's in the code, but for the sake of keeping the information accurate, easy to understand, both with the boards and the general public, to change the measurements instead of midpoint or E, just to go to the peak. Let's just go to the highest point of the building and cap it at what we're going to talk about. It was also during this submittal that the applicant provided a little section on the master concept plan to show the location of the quadrant plan improvements, which we will get into in a later slide. Also at this time, the density was decreased from the original request of 274 units down to 262. The concept plan was once again revised, and this is the one that you have in front of you, where it encompassed all of the aforementioned things, locating the buffers, lowering the height down to two stories, setbacks, signage, the quadrant plan, and there is an additional revision to the density from 262 down to 241. And that is where it stands right now. With regard to the schedule of uses, they appear in two places in your packet, Page 18 in your packet and Page 33 in your packet. Pretty standard for a residential development, accessory uses and structures, administrative offices, carports, garages, community gardens, the dwelling units themselves, entrance gates, excavation for water retention, fences and walls, food and beverage service limited, which is limited to the residents at the Hidden Lakes Plaza, not open to the outside public, parking lot accessories, recreational facilities, and signage. Some more work that was done in this application has to go along with the architectural elevations. This was a copy of the original proposed elevation, and as you can see, they still wanted to include some type of closed-in garage component to it, only it was underneath the building at the time. In order to sort of work through the differences and the concerns over height, the design was altered to remove the garages from the building, place them separately to allow the buildings to shrink down. To the two elevations that you were shown before that are in your staff report, this was the front elevation of the two-story and the four-story. The cross-section, this was a cross-section that was shown by the applicant that they provided to us as well at our request, showing the distance from the Spanish Wells wall, the location of the garage, the parking lot, and the two-story buildings in which they gave us the measurements from the E, midpoint, and peak, keeping in mind that we're looking at just the peak measurements. Let's just make it nice and easy to understand for all in that regards. And we also asked for a similar cross-section for the four-story, which was provided as The next thing to discuss would be the quadrant plan. As we discussed, later iterations of the master concept plan did include a portion where the quadrant plan connectivity was going to be addressed. So we have here the quadrant plan heat map as it appears in the comprehensive plan. Where we're talking about based on this heat map is going to be right in that area there. So it is included as an area in the quadrant that was targeted for additional connectivity beyond that of just using Tamiami Trail or Benita Beach Road. And keeping in mind that it's a planning tool, there was an initial outline for where McMahon Associates thought an alignment would be best served, keeping in mind again, planning tool. And it looks something like this. And this is what was addressed also with the applicant before, that you would have essentially a road running along the eastern boundary of this project, abutting Spanish Wells, building a bridge over the lake, and utilizing some of the existing connections, but not many. The purpose of the bridge to hook up with the light that takes you to Woods Edge. And one of the things that we looked at, we had a conversation with John DePalma, who is here today from McMahon Associates. He's one of the authors of the quadrant plan that was presented to council. We had, on that same phone call, was Brent Addison, the engineer who testified for the applicant today, John Dolmer, myself, and Matt Feeney, the Public Works Director. We had a conversation to discuss whether or not it would be feasible to achieve the desire of the quadrant plan for better interconnectivity, but to do it within the existing roadway network. And throughout that conversation, we started to determine that, yeah, it probably can be possible. And conceptually, this is what was approved. It's a realignment along Benita Crossings Boulevard. This portion of the right-of-way right now is owned by, not the applicant, but it would be owned by, would be owned by the applicant if this takes place. And we felt this was the best location to sort of massage that turn movement along Benita Crossings Boulevard going north and south, which is this way, to keep the flow and to utilize the existing roadway network.
Mike, can I ask you a question on that?
Sure, yes.
Is this slide a final rendition of a specific alignment that the city's desired and asked the developer to provide, or is it a planning document?
It is a planning document. It is conceptual in nature right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And the additional detail, still planning-wise, based on what was presented from the applicant as well in terms of turn movements, location of the sidewalks, crosswalks, again, all subject to still needing the final engineered components of what that plan's going to look like. But conceptually, the agreement was made with staff, John DePalma of McMahon Associates, the author of the quadrant plan, and the applicant to use this area as the targeted area for realignment for better interconnectivity. One of the things we also wanted to make sure was understood that based on that, there may be some off-site impacts to the remainder of the quadrant plan. Again, one of the other preferred alignments of the planning tool was to have additional interconnectivity along Shanna Lane that takes you through Springs Plaza. And we, one of the things we theorized based on the way traffic would be better flowing now as a result of this potential change, where we're talking about within the project, is to add a roundabout or move a roundabout back, one more intersection, to further make sure the traffic has an easier way to flow, and then allow the possibility for the original preferred alignment to be realized by allowing traffic to go back to the east as it was originally designed, and then to the north to meet up with the stoplight at a Royal In terms of the environmental review, the applicant covered it pretty sufficiently. There were no sensitive areas as part of the archaeological review. There were no listed species that were observed by both the applicant and staff. Staff did numerous site visits out to the site with the environmental department to take a look at that. There is a 4.9-acre conservation easement on site that is currently dedicated to the South Florida Water Management District, and a portion of that is a wetland area. And it's important to note that the development will be in the upland area, not impacting the wetlands or the conservation area, and that one of the things that would be required regardless with the new development order would be a new preserve management plan to address maintenance and all those types of issues that have been brought up with the previous discussion that you had with the applicant. Also during the environmental review, buffering was obviously going to be a huge item, especially with the concerns that Spanish Wells had with regards to the proximity of this project to the backyards of some of their residents. So we did insert several conditions that are found later on in the staff report with regards to providing buffers and visual screening along that eastern boundary to help sort of buffer the project from Spanish Wells. Some of the things that we also addressed were on the south side along Sterling Oaks, to have some type of buffer along the south side as well, 15 feet wide on the south side, have at least five trees, a double-staggered hedge row to form a 36-inch-high continuous visual screen. Keeping in mind the placement of that is going to be outside of an FPL easement. There's an existing FPL easement that's there. Obviously, as the applicant had testified and as staff knows, FPL obviously wants to limit what is put within their easements that may make it difficult for them to do their job. It wouldn't make sense to put the landscaping in the easement if it's just going to be ripped out whenever they have to come do a service. So the landscape would be located outside of the FPL easement. As far as the east side, several conditions are included in the staff report to address that, including types of trees and the height. This may be where there is a little bit of a difference between what the applicant was requesting versus what staff was requesting. One of the things that they are requesting as part of their deviations, which we'll get into later, was to address tree height at saying about 14 feet. And that's based on an FPL requirement that when you plant in their easement or near their easement, that's what they're going to require. There are other projects throughout the city where we have had similar instances where you've had a buffer abutting an FPL easement or an easement of another nature, and we've seen 20-foot trees work out just fine. So staff felt it appropriate in order to provide a higher visual barrier to go with a 20-foot tree height as opposed to the 14 as conditioned in the report. For engineering, the bulk of the engineering review is going to take place at time of the development order process, which is when we will have the actual engineering details to do the review. One thing that we did need to see, as was requested early on in the process, was to provide a cross-section of the lake and the slope going into the lake. And we needed that so that we could discuss one of their deviations for a less restrictive water body setback. There were life, health, safety issues that we wanted to see, and we wanted the cross-section to demonstrate that there weren't going to be any concerns in that particular area. We also have code requirements about the slope not being greater than a 4:1, so we do have the cross-section that demonstrates that. And another thing that we wanted to sort of review and also put the applicant on notice of, and it is a condition as well, that the roof overhang as it's proposed in the cross-section... Oh, get to a different one. I got it here somewhere. Maybe I don't have it in here. The roof overhang of the two-story product along the lake encroaches into a 20-foot lake maintenance easement, and we do have a provision in our code that you are not allowed to encroach into an easement if such encroachment provides a hindrance to the purpose of the easement. Even though a roof overhang wouldn't necessarily provide a hindrance for maintaining the lake at the ground, we still have a condition in there that based on the way the code reads, they would have to apply for an easement encroachment approval at a later date prior to construction before we would allow the roof overhangs to encroach into the easement There was a very generalized surface water management plan that was reviewed. I'm not going to go into the details of that. I think that was hashed out pretty good before with the applicant. There are certain code requirements that they will need to meet in terms of providing proper quality and attenuation, and that they would need to meet or exceed South Florida Water Management District standards, and that all those discharges and the data will be reviewed at a time of local development order. They are not requesting any deviations to any of those code sections. Consistency with the Benita Plan. Initially, this was a huge area of concern for staff, and this was the reason why up until about a month or so ago, staff was recommending denial of the original project. And it is one of the reasons why this process has taken the scope of time that it has to try and work around some of those issues that were coming up. The version that you have in front of you is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The main concern that we had originally was with regards to density. The concern is that the comp plan allowed for 10 units per acre, and based on that, when you have a site that is 27.4 acres, that 10 units per acre, that should net you 274 dwelling units. There is a table within the comprehensive plan that addresses the transfer of density from a wetland, which is on site, to the upland. When you have a residential underlying land use, there is a transfer allowed. This project does not have an underlying residential land use. The underlying residential land use is general commercial. Now, again, the general commercial does allow for multifamily development, but nonetheless, it is general commercial, the underlying land use. And in the Table of Policy 1.1.2 within the comp plan, the transfer is zero. So with that in mind, that would have led to the math below of 274 units, 27.4 acres times 10 gives you my 274. I'm lessing out the 4.3-acre wetlands, so I'm subtracting 43 units that are non-transferable, and that gets me to 231 allowable units. The request is for 241, so how did we get there? Additional work was done based, and again, the applicant spoke to this, where you have an LDC section that allows you to present the request for calculating half of the abutting right-of-ways towards your overall density calculation. The map that was provided for staff to review did not include the arrows. I did those. I did those. But this was the map that was provided for review of the project and the abutting right-of-ways. It is important to note that they are not gaining density from all of the abutting right-of-ways. There were two right-of-ways that after further review, staff felt that it would be inappropriate, inconsistent, and possibly illegal to allow density to be taken from these right-of-ways. The biggest example would be this one here that's located in black, which is about half acre. On the existing Hidden Lakes plat, that is a 40-foot ingress/egress that is completely on the property of platted lots one and two that are here in the front. So, you would essentially be utilizing a right-of-way that is completely within the fee simple property of another owner, essentially taking away development rights from the current owner. So, we felt that this was not an appropriate right-of-way to include in the calculation. That same logic extended to another right-of-way to the north, which is part of a different plat known as the crossings of Benita. The applicant has deeds for this right-of-way, this right-of-way, and this right-of-way, all which abut South Tamiami Trail, which is where the density is being pulled from. So, with the additional calculation of these right-of-ways, it adds up to 1.01 acres, which at 10 units an acre, that gives you the extra 10 units. That gives you, that takes you from the 231 that we had originally to the 241. So, that is how we got to that figure. The deviations that were requested, the applicant had gone over those already. There were eight of them that were requested. The analysis begins on page 22 of the staff report for these deviations. The landscape standards, which just was a deviation for the wall or the berm-wall combo, again, trying to understand, is there an inherent benefit or net benefit to have an existing wall face a new wall? Maintenance-wise, it was going to be a concern of staff to look at it from that way. The existing wall is on the applicant's property, so there is a wall that is already there. One of the things that we're working on right now, and we have some working language towards that, it ended up in the deviations section of my original staff report, but I think Audrey was working on moving it to the conditions section, is to have an understanding that if the existing wall comes down, a new wall needs to be erected in conformance with the code, unless an agreement is reached to place the new wall within the Spanish Wells wall easement that's currently there. And it sounds like that's where the conversation was headed between the applicant and, and Spanish Wells. And also with the understanding that we have a slew of landscaping conditions that would help provide a, a visual buffer along that east side. So, with the understanding that the applicant is committed to planting on the east side with the betterment plan that we have suggested based on the conditions, and the fact that if the existing wall comes down, you have two choices. You're putting up a wall that meets the current code, or you could, which location-wise would be 25 feet further back, or if you can reach an agreement with Spanish Wells to put it in the same location as the existing wall, that will suffice as well. I'll just go over a couple more of these relatively quickly. The open space requirement was already discussed, whereas the requirement is for 50, 50% of the required open space to be natural or indigenous, which would have amounted to about 5.48 acres plus or minus of the overall open space requirement, to go ahead and use the existing 4.9 acre conservation easement as the open space. When you look at the aerial of the site and the impacts that had already been made, that one just made sense as the only area that had yet to be severely impacted by prior development. So, staff felt it was appropriate, based on the constraints of the site, to go ahead and approve that deviation as well. The water body setback was another one. This was one that initially staff was not in favor of because we did not have the cross-section to review to support it. They did provide us a cross-section. The cross-section is available in your staff report. The slopes met the code, so because of that, we were recommending approval for the water body setback. The principal and accessory setback to the preserve, which currently calls for 30 feet to allow 25 feet. I believe this was one where a board member, Worster, may have had some concerns about in terms of how this one was going to, to function, and we do have Mike Kirby here and John Dolmer and myself as well to sort of better explain that one. The, the way this one was looked at, there were essentially several areas and several code areas that were closely related to this specific deviation that were used as a justification for, for allowing this type of deviation. One of them is to understand the function of that area and what it actually serves as. It's primarily a wetland. And, and one of the things that I'm sure Mike Kirby can attest to is the burn rate of wetlands versus the burn rate of the, of the drier areas that they tend not to burn as much or as readily because they are naturally wet. Also understanding that the, the, the proposed development is going to have a fire protection system in place, and the third item, understanding that this wetland and this conservation area is within an easement that is dedicated to the South Florida Water Management District. Standard practice within the district is that their easement includes a buffer. So, the edge of the easement doesn't necessarily mean that's the edge of the actual vegetation. Typically, buffers are built into the easement already as standard practice for South Florida. So, with that in mind, and I think that was the comment that I would have addressed with Board Member Worster, with that in mind, staff was recommending approval of that deviation with the understanding that the fire department was also going to provide additional review at time of the local development order.
Mike, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Could you identify on the site plan where this wetland deviation would be? Have you got a slide that shows where it would be?
So, it would be to the corner of this two-story building and from the amenity center and the pool deck area. Those are the only locations that are at risk of violating that 30-foot setback right now.
Thank you. And, well, let me just ask you one question.
Sure.
Does it serve a purpose to increase that or decrease that buffer from 30 to 25 feet by getting that one building a little farther back from the edge of Spanish Wells?
Yes, and, and that was part of the rationale as well, along with the water body setback, was to allow the buildings to be placed as far as possible away from the existing Spanish Wells subdivision, but still understand there were life, health, safety issues that need to be adequately addressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Get back to my slide now. I believe I was on slide 35. Okay. Additional deviations that were also discussed previously with regards to the solid waste disposal, there is a square footage requirement in the wind development code right now. What they were going to do was utilize a compactor. We had already discussed the relocation of that compactor and also transposing its positioning to be more internal to the site as opposed to external. Along with this one, we also have a condition in the staff report with regards to the noise ordinance that the city does have a noise ordinance that is enforceable and that this development will have to meet the noise ordinance as well. The sixth deviation is one that staff doesn't think is needed. This was a, this was a request to allow one additional sign where the property line exceeds 2,000 feet to allow an additional sign in 250 feet. The way that portion of the sign code is written is that if you have a property line that is over 2,000 feet in length, you can place a sign on that side. This side also happens to accommodate the main entrance to the subdivision, which is where they want to have their entry monuments on either side of the access. That's fine. That, that's allowed by code right now. There is a request for a third sign also along that same property line to have an additional sign. The code doesn't discriminate between an area that already has its code-provided signs and then also having one more. If you meet that 2,000-foot length requirement, you can have your additional sign. They have more than 2,000 feet in length along the west side, which is where all of their access points are, so staff didn't feel that deviation was needed and was recommending withdrawal of that particular deviation. For deviation seven with regards to plan, installation, and maintenance, this has to do with overlapping easements into buffers and that a provision for no trees or shrubs to be located in any utility or drainage easement, and to allow plantings within the easement on the eastern property line with the tree height the max of 14 feet. We recommended approval of that, but again, with the different height requirement of 20 feet versus 14. Additional deviations that were requested, the eighth one, a 15-foot wide landscape buffer to permit a five-foot reduction where the garages encroach. Based on their existing site plan, the garages would be encroaching into the required landscape buffer. Since the garages can help serve as a visual barrier, staff would recommend approval. There was a condition in the staff report that says that you're also going to plant around the garages on the east side, which is the side that faces, which is the side that faces Spanish Wells. So, the intent is still met in that you are providing a visual buffer, and you are also still providing plantings on that east side of the garage facing Spanish Wells. So, with all of that, staff was recommending approval. There were conditions to go along with this approval, the big one being it must be consistent with the master concept plan that you have in front of you, and again, on that master concept plan has all of the development regulations, it has the listed deviations, it has their locations, the height requirements, the setbacks, they're all shown on the master concept plan that's part of this approval. So, the condition was you must be consistent with that master concept plan. A second condition, all buildings or structures within 110 feet of Spanish Wells cannot exceed the peak two-story elevation. That 110-foot mark was not pulled out of thin air. There is a current 90-foot setback from the Spanish Wells property line to the two-story buildings, and there is also provision on their development regulations that the separation of buildings would be at least 20 feet. 90 plus 20 gives you your 110. If you're within 110 feet of Spanish Wells, you gotta drop the height down to the peak two-story elevation. We also had the schedule of uses and the property development regulations that would be tied to this project. We have a condition in there about the landscape islands on the sides of the garages to also be planted. So, now we're not just talking the back portion facing Spanish Wells, we're talking the sides as well. And as the applicant had testified before, there are larger landscape islands in which to do these plantings, and we're requesting that they do at least, trees to be at least 20 feet high in those areas. Condition five was that the garages would need to be planted on the east side. Condition six, where the multifamily buildings are not shielded by the garages or the walls or the eastern buffer, to go ahead and provide additional trees and buffering around the perimeter of the building. And one of these sections that the applicant showed in their presentation showed perimeter buffering around the buildings themselves to help provide an additional barrier and buffer from Spanish Wells. We also have a separate condition for that eastern buffer specifically for tree height and types of trees. Evergreen trees at least 20 feet high, using shrubs and having shrubs be on the east side of the wall as well, which is the Spanish Wells side of the wall, and that the shrubs be maintained at the same height of the wall or higher. Additional condition to provide the more detailed plans for that quadrant plan realignment on between the crossings Boulevard at time of local development order. Understanding that drainage needs to meet or exceed the South Florida standards, utilizing gutters for, for, for better water direction on the buildings themselves. Understanding the four-to-one slope, that that's what it has to be with that slope extending at least one foot below the lake control elevation for better drainage purposes. Complying with Lee County solid race requirements, and then also reorienting the compactor internal to the site as opposed to having access right from your, your main entryway. Again, the aesthetics of that, staff had some, had some concerns with. Yes, we understand it's going to be walled off and barriered per LDC requirements, but to have the, you know, the, the possibility of the doors being left open and that faces right outside your main entrance where you have needed crossings Boulevard, we didn't think that was appropriate and to orient the access internal to the site. There was a request on their schedule of uses to allow consumption on premises, and we wanted the applicant to be aware and understand that if the consumption on premises request is to extend to the outdoor area of the amenity center or the pool deck, it's going to require special exception approval. The reason for that is because there is residential within 500 feet, Spanish Wells and Sterling And the code requires that if you have residential under separate ownership within 500 feet, that you have to go through the special exception process for your consumption on premises, which is the public hearing process. Also understanding approval of this rezone does not guarantee development order approval, and that all development and uses must comply with the, with the city's noise control ordinance and must comply with the LDC unless conditioned or deviations were granted. A few additional conditions that were not included in the staff report in the conditions section, they were in the deviations section as part of our justification stipulation for approval. One of them had to do with deviation one, which was regarding the wall. Again, saying that if the existing wall were to be demolished, a new wall needs to be erected in conformance with the code, unless an agreement is made with Spanish Wells to erect the new wall within the dedicated Spanish Wells wall easement. And then also in support of deviation number eight, that the garages, as well as the multifamily buildings, will need to undergo an architectural review at time of local development order. So, we still have additional means to review and regulate this project going forward.
And I can read those conditions where I place them at this time, if I may. Chairman Kurlander?
Yes.
Okay, so, condition seven, I modified to add the deviation one language. So, after you have the landscape buffer language in condition seven, following the shrubs, I'm going to read language. It's going to sound very familiar to what Mike has already read to you, but I've added the sentence, "In the, if the existing wall is demolished, a new wall shall be erected in conformance with the LDC Section 3-418D6 unless an agreement is made with Spanish Wells to erect the new wall within the dedicated Spanish Wells wall easement." Try saying that fast. And then, the other one was the architectural, if you look at his slide or the slide prior to this, that was showing in support of devia, devia, thank you, deviation eight and the architectural review. There's a broader condition, and it was added to number, it was new condition 13, and then we renumbered the conditions, that the development must comply with LDC Section 3-490, which requires multifamily buildings, including garages and the clubhouse, to meet the architectural standards. So.
Counselor, is the applicant in agreement with these changes?
The applicant, we worked on this today. My understanding is Neil is aware that they were in the deviations and that they're being, they were going to be moved to the conditions, but I have not spoken to her personally.
Yeah, the one on referring to the code section, I think that's wise, otherwise there are no standards, so I actually encourage that one. The wording on, on the Spanish Wells wall, I didn't really, I'll confess, I didn't quite catch all that, so.
And Neil, what I would be doing.
If you have it writing, I'd love to read it.
Yes. What I would do is, depending on the action today, I would send out, my typical practice is I would send it to the applicant as well as staff, a copy of the draft ordinance as it's been modified by this zoning board, mostly to also look to see if there's any technical things that I messed up on. Legal descriptions, for example, I'd like to make sure I'm actually rezoning the correct property. And they would verify that the document is correct. So, she would have opportunity to read it from now till when we actually go to hearings in October. Is this an October hearing?
Yeah, it'll be October.
So, there, there'll be time for her to read it, but, so I can't say if she's in agreement or not at this point, but they are conditions that are word for word from what was in before. And then I also need what the zoning board's recommendation is going to be for the deviation in which staff has requested it be withdrawn, and I don't really know the applicant's position, if they want it approved or...
This is number eight?
Right now, so, no, that's like six, I think.
Six, I believe, for the signs?
Seven, I think.
The signs, right.
We just talked too fast.
It's six. So, I would need this board to give a recommendation because that is a matter of dispute at this time. It's a minor dispute. Staff is recommending withdrawal because it's not necessary. Applicant desires for the condition to be approved. Whatever the zoning board tells us is how I will draft the ordinance.
And I think one thing to keep in mind is that the, the deviation as requested wasn't for size or square footage or anything like that. It had to do with a mis, essentially a misinterpretation of the code as far as staff is concerned with the number of signs they're allowed to have along that western boundary. It's, it's not a concern. It's not a concern.
And I think the applicant would submit that interpretation change. And so to protect against changing interpretations, we would prefer to keep the deviation and prefer that it be approved so there's no question on a going-forward basis what is or is not permitted.
Is this the only area of disagreement between the applicant and the staff?
Mr. Arnold has-
Chairman Kurlander, I think there are a couple of others with the wording is a little bit clear for us. So I think before our rebuttal, maybe if we could have a chance to gather with our client just to discuss it, make sure that we're okay or that we might offer some minor modification.
So we are not going to be able, we're going to lose some people here, but you know, you're certainly entitled to as much time as you need.
We'll just take three minutes and go in the other room and not take a break.
Well, he's got public hearing.
He's got one more slide.
Please.
Why don't you guys talk some public talk?
My final slide was just based on the findings that we have to by LDC look at with regards to whether or not to approve or deny a project of this type. The performance and locational standards doesn't necessarily apply in this case, as the applicant had stated before. It is consistent now with the densities and intensities in the comprehensive plan, wasn't before, it is now after a lot of work. As conditioned by staff, we do believe it's compatible with existing and planned uses in the surrounding area. It will not adversely affect the environmentally critical areas or the natural resources. That's all within the South Florida Water Management easement anyway. Would not place an undue burden upon existing transportation or planned infrastructure facilities. Urban services are available, the mix of uses are appropriate and standard for what you would see within a residential plan development. We believe the conditions that have been placed upon the master concept plan are adequate and provide sufficient safeguards for the public well-being. We believe the conditions are reasonably rated and we believe the deviations would enhance the project overall. And that's all I have, thank you.
I have a question about the entrance area and the realignment.
Sure.
Did you make the comment that they don't own that property?
They do, they do own it right now.
Oh, they do, okay.
One of the reasons why we felt it was appropriate to try and use the existing roadway network was because they had ownership over several of those roadways.
All right, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, minor questions. At what point will this wall be reconstructed, the old wall removed, if that's the way they choose to go? Will that be done prior to construction of the condos? Is there any regulation to that or any? I'm just thinking about protecting the noise levels for the residents of Spanish Wells. That's the first question I have.
The condition doesn't address that aspect of it. I do know that we have requirements in the noise ordinance already for construction. There are no deviations being requested from those noise ordinance standards as it pertains to active construction sites, they would have to adhere to the code.
Okay. Secondly, is there, are there monument signs along US 41 pointing to this community? I don't recall seeing any.
There would be a total of three signs. They would have to be monument in nature by the sign code. They would be on both sides of the entrance, it looks like.
Right there, right.
Here and here. This would be the third one.
So nothing on 41?
Nothing on 41 that they are proposing at this time, though.
And my last question, the shrub, the tree height, the shrub height of 20-foot that's been in your deviation, is that as planted or the grown height?
As planted, 12 to 14 feet, maintained at 20 once matured.
Thank you.
Any other questions here?
Just one last question. Are there any residential structures in Spanish Wells that are more than one-story?
Yes, there are three multifamily areas in Spanish Wells that I believe are-
That are, I'm sorry, that are adjacent to this.
That are adjacent to this?
No.
Outside of Sterling Oaks, no, there's nothing in Spanish Wells that's adjacent to this. This is all the single-family portion of Spanish Wells.
Did you mean two-story homes?
There's an allowance in the code in Spanish Wells for them to build up to 35 feet high if they wanted to as your single-family home. So they very well could be, you know, redesigned and for higher.
So I have a concern, I'm still concerned about the surface water here. In your report to us, you said that the applicant gave you some preliminary things, but you didn't choose to show it to us. They showed us some things. And yet you're saying that we are promoting the health, safety, and welfare of the community. We don't know at this point what the runoff is going to be, what the retention's going to be, and so on. The Land Development Code 4-325G says that alteration of the vegetation or topography that unnecessarily disrupts the surface water or groundwater hydrology increases erosion of the land or destroys significant wildlife habitat is prohibited. And we don't know, do we, whether any of that's going to happen until later on?
That's true.
Presumably you will deal with it later on, but as of today, we don't know that.
Well, we do know some things. We do know there's a designated discharge rate that can't be exceeded, so you're going to have to meet that discharge rate. We do know that littoral zones are required. And we do know that both the regulations of the Water Management District and the regulations of the city will have to be adhered to. And it's an engineering review that the engineers for the city and the engineers for the district evaluate.
The information that the applicant showed today is not part of the submittal, but it's encouraging that they have the amount of detail to show compliance with the Water Management District and the city requirements for drainage. And that will be reviewed extensively at the time of local development order. And I can assure you, we'll make sure that they meet those requirements.
And to that, I would also add one of the conditions in there, that approval of this concept does not guarantee development order approval. So yes, there are several items in the engineering area where the additional detail is required at time of development order. This would be an example of one of those requirements.
One thing I did see in the presentation and heard in the applicant's engineer's presentation, that's encouraging they're maintaining historic flows, which are a requirement of the city and the development order. So we'll work out the conditions of the permit to sustain compliance.
Could I ask a question? Mr. Stewart, come on up, back up there. The question I'm asking is during testimony by Mr. Addison, he stated he is not, during historic flows, he is not changing anything of the historic flows that are going through. If he is required by the Water Management District or during development order to increase the culverts because of the need based on historic flow, he will do the changes though at that time.
Yes, he mentioned that he has a major modification to go through for this project and the Water Management District will look at that, the existing water management permit and if modifications need to be made to move water, excuse me, I'm getting over a cold, to move water through a culvert or quantity of water, it will be increased accordingly.
So if he's required to upsize the culverts that he says he's not changing later on because it's necessary based on modeling for the stormwater, he will do so?
Yes, he will have to do so.
And at this time, it's not typical to engineer a site, completely have it engineered at time of zoning because if there were modifications to other things, you'd then have to go and redo the engineering, just like the counting of the parking spaces we heard earlier on today.
No, but enough concept has been presented to assure staff that there is a concept that will work.
So when Mike reads the findings of facts as to that this will not hurt anybody, you agree with the statement that staff made today from an engineering standpoint?
Most definitely agree.
Thank you.
Just for the record, we have, staff has, all of the other staff members here that worked on this are available with the presentation that Mike presented. I don't think we're going to call as witnesses right now unless you specifically want to hear on those items. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? Please come forward, state your name.
Hey, Rick Steinmeier. This is in District Three. Full disclosure, I'm running for city councilman from District Three. I have one question. The elevation of the first living floor on these apartments, I assume that's above flood stage since most buildings have underground, underbuilding parking because of the floods. So I guess that will be addressed whether they're still high enough not to be flooded out all the time. And I've been told that the recycle, recycling requirement is going to be handled by the management company in the compacting area. So I approve this project, thank you.
Yeah, just for the record, FEMA and South Florida set the elevations for the first habitable floor and this project will have to meet those.
Do you have two different, my understanding is that there are two different flood designations on the property. One on one side of the property, one on the other, and there will be different elevations. One will be 11 feet above, is that right?
Not necessarily. There's a provision that says that if this were to become a unified project, if it were all to become one strap number, one parcel ID, if you have more than one flood designation on a parcel, you have to go with whatever the most restrictive one is.
Okay.
If it stays parceled out, though, they'll have to meet the designation that's afforded to that piece.
Right. Yes, sir.
Lynn Doherty with Spanish Wells.
Thank you.
Are we going to lose half of you here in five minutes?
Well, we're going to, as soon as the public comment is finished, we can vote.
Well, I might be more than five minutes.
Give it your best shot.
I don't know where it is.
It's right there.
Okay, I'm Lynn Doherty, I'm a resident Spanish Wells, I live in 28424 Del Lago Way. I'm chairman of the Spanish Wells Committee to interface with Millhouse concerning the Hidden Lake development. You've seen a lot of diagrams. This is Millhouse's final drawing of the site plan and I have on here the residents of Spanish Wells from 28388 to 28500 are the ones that are most impacted by this development. This is Del Lago Way right here. And as you can see, and there's my house right there, 28424 Del Lago Way. So I'm not only on the committee, but I am a resident with a significant impact. And I think just to look at this project without looking at the houses on Spanish Wells and also maybe calling those lots on over here really does not connote what you are here to examine today. These are single-family homes and each person there has, considering most of their ages, I'm probably the youngest guy on the street, invested a substantial portion of their net wealth in that house. And what we're here to talk about today is what impacts this development may have on those investments. I know I bought my house in November of 2016 and I didn't get an appraisal, I paid cash for it, so, but I paid 585. If you asked me today how much I'd pay for that house, it may be significantly different. Okay, because I found out about this development in, what, February, March of 2017. Anyway, so I'd just like to have the connotation of looking at this as homes, not just lots on the border of the Hidden Lake apartment development. Okay. A little history, on April 21st, 2017, various residents of Spanish Wells met with John Dolmer and City Councilman Stephen Slackta, I think I pronounced that right. And we reviewed the Hidden Lake development, we expressed our concerns. Dolmer suggested that we contact Millhouse and work out something mutually beneficial. And we did proceed with that. We had various meetings with Millhouse, numerous contacts. They've been very receptive in talking with us. I even have Greg Martin's cell phone number and he takes my calls when I call him. And so overall, it's been a very amiable process. Okay. However, the reason for my presence here today is that Millhouse wishes to rezone the property. The rezoning requires the zoning board to approve the deviations and of course later the city council. The deviations create an impact on the adjoining Spanish Wells property owners. We are pretty much in agreement on everything, I wouldn't say pretty much, we are in agreement on everything. And that is in place, however, we do not have a final signed agreement. Okay. Millhouse's request, or what we request the zoning board at Spanish Wells is to allow our input on the wording of deviation number one. And we do not agree with the city's position on deviation number one. Excuse me, my pages have stuck together here. Okay, we have a draft agreement in place, which, everything that Greg Martin has told you is pretty much what is in that draft agreement. It's not final as of this meeting, we basically agreed on the economics of everything and the attorneys must work out the legal wording. I think everyone's already been over that. But today, Spanish Wells wishes to join Millhouse in their zoning request, subject to a small change in the wording on deviation one. As we know, deviation one pertains to the construction of an eight-foot wall in accordance with the Land Development Code 3-418D6. The staff report on page 33 of 39 recommends approval of existing cementitious fence as a substitute of the wall in accordance with 418. It also refers to a condition whereby if the existing wall, which really is not a wall, it's a cementitious fence, but is demolished, a new wall in accordance with 418 shall be erected. We request that this deviation be reworded to eliminate the ifs and be absolute in its requirement for a new wall. The reasons for the wording of deviation number one are the existing cementitious fence is really not a wall but a fence. Its existing heist is just above six feet on the Spanish Wells side and it is significantly less on the Hidden Lake side. And I think someone asked the question about the elevation on Hidden Lake. The finished slab elevation of the Hidden Lake apartments is approximately two feet above a slab elevation on the Del Lago Way Street. The fence has been poorly maintained for years and currently is in a dismal state of affairs. Now, whose fault is that? Well, the bulk of the fault of that lies on the Spanish Wells side. However, you asked the question, who's responsible for that? And I have a copy, if you would like, of our wall easement agreement, but I would like to read that in paragraph 2.4C. Provided that from and after the date grantee, its successors or assigned commences improvement of the grantor's land, the person owning the land shall become responsible for the cleaning, pressure cleaning, repairing, repainting, removal of the mold. In other words, they're responsible for the west face of the wall. In other words, they're responsible for the west face of the wall.
If I may, your objection deals with one word, if the wall is taken down. So when I reviewed this, I kind of shared your concern. But what you're proposing is that there be two walls.
No, sir. No, sir.
If you take out the word "if," if you take out the word "if," you do not have the obligation, Spanish Wells does not have the obligation-
Spanish Wells has the obligation-
-to remove the wall-
Per the 1995-
-to get construction of a new wall, and you could very wind up with a very, very bad situation with two walls. Am I not correct? I mean, that's-
No, sir. Per the 1995 agreement, Spanish Wells has the obligation to remove the wall.
Understood.
We are not trying to evade that agreement. We have, and I had the president here earlier of the association, he had to leave, and we have already told Millhouse, we will pay for the removal of the wall.
So for clarification, they want the wall removed?
Yes, sir.
The existing wall? Whatever, cement, whatever that word?
Cementitious fence.
You want that fence removed?
Yes, sir.
And you're in agreement to have a new wall fence constructed?
Millhouse has already agreed to do that.
So-
However, my board looks at this as, well, we don't want some agreement that we may have to litigate points down the road.
Understood.
We want it part of the zoning order.
We understand.
That is what our request is for.
But if you take out the word "if" and put in "absolute," you put that up on the screen? Don't you want-
And we need to make sure we can hear all of you.
Okay.
I think what Mr. Doherty is asking for is something to the effect of, at time of development order, the old wall will be removed and a new wall shall be erected.
Well, that's different. That makes sense to me.
Yeah, that's the way I understood it.
If that's what you're asking for, that makes sense to me.
Is that going to be part of the zoning? Because a development-
Part of the zoning or the development order?
I would say at time of-
Well, we can make it a condition that-
You always make things at time of development order.
Okay, we can make it a, we can make it a condition.
My board would like that to be part of the zoning, because then that's absolute, it will be done, or the project won't be done.
Right, so condition seven would be modified, what I read to you earlier, and take out if the existing wall is demolished, and have at time of development order, the existing wall will be demolished and a new wall shall be erected in conformance with LDC 314.
How do we put an obligation on someone that's not an applicant before us? If we use that language, we are putting an obligation on Spanish Wells?
Yeah, and I think what we need is, we need to keep one of the ifs, and I'm trusting you guys, you're absolutely going to take the wall down. So if they remove it, then we have to put the new one up. And so the obligation on us is absolute, the obligation on you isn't.
The current, the current condition as, now, number seven, it was in deviation one, and I took it word for word, is if the existing wall is demolished, a new wall shall be erected in conformance with our Land Development Code section, I won't read that out, unless an agreement is made with Spanish Wells to erect the new wall within the Spanish Wells wall easement. So if the Spanish Wells wall easement, if they're not able to come to an agreement on that, then, and the wall easement, I believe, is on the Hidden Lakes property?
It is.
Okay? At that time, that would then trigger the requirement for them to place that new wall.
And I'm confident we're going to get this all written down here. But I think the one thing that needs to be clear is, we can't build a new fence until we get a DO, so it's not something we can do before we get a DO.
Understood.
Okay.
Sir?
Well, again, I'll go back to, my board wants, if we are going to join Millhouse in approval of these deviations, then we want it to be absolute that the wall, they will construct a new wall in the same approximate position of the existing wall.
Do you want it to do a wall or a fence?
No, he wants a wall.
A wall, I want a wall.
You want a masonry wall?
Would you like to know the difference between a wall and a fence?
I think I do.
I have, I have a demonstration.
Right, you've got a, you've got a fence now.
We've got a fence now, that's right.
You want a, a masonry wall. I think you need to make that clear. So you're obligating Spanish Wells to remove the wall prior to construction of the new wall?
Yes, sir, and they are already obligated per the 1995 agreement.
Okay? So what, councillor, help me out here.
Actually, I think that what Mike's got says that the, if the wall is demolished, then a new wall shall be erected in conformance with the code, which would basically mean that it has to be farther away from Spanish Wells and more on the site. So that's not helpful to the landowner. The landowner wants the wall where it is right now, because it's-
Deviation-
-more parking. So if his condition goes on, unless there's an agreement made between the two parties to keep the wall where it is and to have it replaced, and then it'll be eight feet long, eight feet tall. But I'm willing to help the applicant and staff come up with some tight language today, in the next hour or so, if we need to.
Right, and very typically, something like this, we will send it out to Mr. Doherty or Mr. Dowtry, we'll receive a copy, his attorney will receive a copy, and we can work on that condition together, or the applicant and Spanish Wells can work on that condition if there's a timing requirement that they're looking towards.
So what we can do is, we could, we can vote on it now, before we lose our quorum here. And I, as part of the record, I'm obligated to send to the city council a note. And I'd be willing to put in that note that, what we've agreed to here.
Again, I think this gentleman assumes that I'm trying to eliminate deviation one. We are, we are not, because-
We understand your position.
We're, we're going to join them in deviation one, because deviation one requires a 25-foot setback.
I got it.
Yeah, I think that's the Doherty, if I'm hearing everybody right, I think conceptually, we all are in agreement on what we're trying to accomplish. What we don't have is precise words, but I get the sense Mr. Curlander is going to kind of direct us to work with the staff to come up, and you to come up with that precise language.
And that'll be prior to the, prior to the time it goes to city council.
Absolutely.
And we'll include, please include a note that I will sign for the city council to that effect.
Okay.
Is that okay?
And I'll put it in the ordinance, I'll just put, note, this is to be worked on, and generally highlighted language is that indicator.
And we don't want anybody to have any surprises, and we want you to, we want, we want to understand, we want you to understand exactly how that's going to work.
So we're going to accommodate you.
And my board wants to understand.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We don't want you to get in trouble either.
The only other thing I might note is-
Sir?
That as far as the drainage, because that-
You realize you've won the argument.
Right, I'm just going on-
You're about, you know, you can lose it if you go forward, you've won.
This is a second argument.
No, this is, this is a different argument.
Oh, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And it's really not an argument, it's just a point of reference. Okay? No, I appreciate your listening to me.
Absolutely.
And, and thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, the statement that Hidden Lake will not drain onto Spanish Wells. Currently, there is some drainage onto Spanish Wells, and that's unavoidable. There is still going to be a little bit of drainage on Spanish Wells. I just talked with Brett, their engineer, and, you know, that's acceptable to us. I think, though, if, if there's going to be a net drainage calculation as to what the total water runoff is on Hidden Lake, they should also take into consideration that there is going to be some drainage from their swell to the wall, which will go through into the Spanish Wells drainage ditch. And someone had a question, I think, earlier on the commercial properties on 41. Commercial property does have weirs that drain into Hidden Lake. I've gone back through all their plans and know that. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anything further? Anybody else would-
I have two quick points.
Please.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, when we took our break to talk about a couple of the outstanding issues, we talked to Mr. Dolmer, and I think we were in agreement that much as we're going to continue to work on the deviation with regard to the wall, I think we need to discuss a little bit more detail about staff's condition about planting on the east side of that wall. There are some constraints with the existing FP&L easement. And also, we're in discussions with Spanish Wells about what if any landscaping they actually do want, because there is an FP&L easement there. So I'd like that discussion to remain a little bit open, and know that we might be rewording some of that before council. And then, secondarily, with regard to the trash compactor, Mr. Dolmer indicated that we are going to be going through architectural review for that, so maybe we won't have to realign the trash compactor enclosure as much as we might have to provide some decorative fencing or things like that to make it a little bit more attractive. But I think we're on the same page with regard to where we need to get to. It was, it was the attractiveness side of this, not the function side of this. So just, I want to go on record to let you know that we're going to continue to work on that language. And I think the other one that's, I'll just mention it so we all know that we're working toward that, too, is the one regarding the Benita crossings intersection alignment that's part of the quadrant plan. We think the language needs to be tightened up a little bit, but we'd like to work with staff on that. I think conceptually, we're there, but like Mr. Dowtry said, we'd like some finite language to work toward by the time we get to council.
And I still need deviation six, whether you agree with staff that it should be withdrawn or denied, or if it should be approved?
No, I think we, I think I indicated earlier, we did not want to withdraw it because it's an interpretation question. We've all been burned by changing interpretations, so since we all agree we can do it, we'd like to have it approved.
So if the zoning board wishes for it to be approved, then we can approve it.
Director?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Nice to see you.
To put this issue to bed, I think Ms. Montgomery wants some certainty. We don't want to go ahead with the deviation. I think we can approve it as a condition that simply states the applicant has the right to signs in those locations. That way, it will not matter a future determination or interpretation of this policy.
I like that even better.
So we'll withdraw the deviation and make it a condition?
Of approval, yes, sir.
Is that all right? Yeah?
That's perfect.
The other discussions on the compactor, I really don't want to get into redesigning a compactor in the break room with council chambers. So we would request a little indulgence in terms of the flexibility, so we can come up with a plan that functions as well as looks attractive. And in terms of the plantings on the east side of the buffer, we can work with them, there's not much space, there's two feet of space there, we would have to work, if there's going to be plantings, there's going to be easements that have to be granted to install, there's going to be a couple of issues that spiral from this. So if we're going to do this, we want to make sure it's done right, we want to make sure it functions. So that's, that's our concern.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from, has everybody here been, get to say what they want to say? Yeah, we've lost one now. Are you all satisfied that you've had the opportunity to say what you want to say?
I have nothing more.
Okay, can I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the project with the agreement, or with the agreement that the deviation six be, help me with the language.
Modified into condition 14 as to signage, which would permit the three signs consistent with what's in the deviation request.
Okay, and that-
I haven't drafted it yet.
Okay, thank you. And that Chairman Curlander will provide a note to city council explaining this board's position on the issue with regards to the wall.
And not deviation one.
And that's deviation one.
Deviation one, it's actually condition seven, remember? Okay? And what I did is I put inside the ordinance, per Chair Curlander, this condition to be modified based on coordination between Spanish Wells and applicant unless current language is agreed upon. Because it could be that they liked the language at the end of the day.
Right.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? There be no discussion, roll call, please.
Barbara Bronsbeannon?
Yes.
Russwin?
Yes.
Chairman Curlander?
Yes.
Richard Donnelly?
Yes.
Roger Brunswick?
Yes.
Thank you for hanging with 15 extra minutes, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
You'll get, you'll get our bill.
Good presentation.
Well, Baron, I hope you stay safe. Hope you don't have to evacuate to Georgia.
Which we've been invited to.
Yeah.